I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as Pastor Kathy Sweet from the Monticello Methodist Church, lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious and Almighty God, as the weather changes, we are reminded of how you never change. We pray tonight for all of our elected officials, for the decisions that they have to make, and we just ask that you would give them the wisdom of Solomon, for it is in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frericks?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. Public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer, the mayor. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. First up this evening is Kim King.
I would like to speak on the issue of the county's and the city's decision on use of marijuana in the city. Full disclosure, I'm slightly outside of the city limits, but I have five grandkids expecting the fifth one in the city limits, and if you know our family, there will probably be a lot more of us here. So, we're hoping. So, I do want to speak to that. There's been a lot, I spoke at the zoning meeting the other day, and there's been a lot of thought to why are more people speaking on this, that maybe there's kind of an apathy toward this issue. And first of all, I want to commend the council for even putting their neck out there a little bit to consider a ban. You could have just followed champagne and just gone with it. But I think that kind of calls to, one of the reasons you don't see a lot of people saying much is we've elected people that we respect and understand, and that we feel that have our same values, and so it's our own laziness, but we just tend to let you guys do the research and figure it out. But I don't think it's that people don't care. If you talk around, and there's a lot of strong churches here in town, and there's a lot of people that would care on this issue. I think the second reason maybe there's a lack of public participation is just a little bit of a lack of education on this topic. If you look at this, if you go to knowreadillinois.com, just spend 20 minutes on, listen to some of the videos and things. I think there's a misconception in the public, partly that's being advocated by the marijuana industry, that this is just your, you know, your prototype Cy Robertson from Duck Dynasty, man from the Vietnam War that's come back and wants to grow a little pot in the backyard, and why are we to stop him? But that's not what we're talking about. And if you just go to that site, you can see research after research on the problems that marijuana is causing in the states where it has been legalized. And we're talking about a totally different thing when we are talking about considering this in Monticello. If you just look at this, there's four pages here, but when you're talking about the idea of just the taxes, you're talking about the economic issues, if you look at the second page cost summary, what Colorado has found is for every dollar of tax that they, money that they've collected, they've spent $4.35 or something like that in cost because of marijuana. You just look at this first page, and my glasses on, but $38 million for hospitalizations compared to 247 million of benefits. You know, it is not a moneymaker. It's, and we're just beginning to see some of the problems because of marijuana. You can just look at this cost summary, hospitalization, treatment of disorders, all kinds of things. There's a lot of information out there. There's videos on that website about a son who was the top of his class in high school and started taking this marijuana that's now 98 percent THC, which is different than marijuana before, and had committed suicide within a few months after just preparing a video on what great things he wanted to accomplish the next year, and then he's committed suicide. And they have a diary that he has done, where she admitted to taking these high doses of THC. There's 700 cases of kids in the United States who ingested marijuana accidentally and were hospitalized or treated in 2017. In 2016, there were 20 cases. So, there's been, you know, to say that somehow this is going to be more safe because it's legal is not true. The more access that children have, the more likely that there's going to be problems with it, and we just don't need that here. You know, we just, our kids are having enough trouble, and we do not need the next generation dealing with those type of things. And I think we need to send a strong message in Monticello that this is not something that we promote, we're not something we're going to money off of, it does not fit our values of our state. But I would really encourage you to go to this site. I would ask that the board to consider just a full ban right away. There is precedent for that. Morton, Illinois, has already done that. If you want me to get the actual ordinance information, I can do that for you, but the Morton Village Board already banned any dispensing, processing, transporting, cultivation centers, any type of recreational marijuana, and the village attorney says this is the top of our sphere, that they'll be bringing more ordinances in 2020 for this. So, there's already precedent for this to be done, that we can look at, so that we don't have to do all the work ourselves to get this accomplished. I think it's an experiment that has proven not to have worked in Colorado and other states that have legalized marijuana, and I think we really need to look at that. I would suggest that the board either directly ban it at this point or give it the 12-month moratorium to consider the deal.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is my question.
I'd like to echo what that lady said back there. This is a no-win issue for anybody. And I'd like to draw some correlations. The USA Today had a big vaping issue statement in there on the newspaper today, and nothing good from it. 530 lung cases, eight deaths in just a couple of years. The kids have taken, there's quite a few of them are doing it in bathrooms and other places where they can hide from it at school. There's a lot of other things. Channel 3 News had a thing on just the other night. They said that 60 percent of families live paycheck to paycheck. Now, if that paycheck starts including marijuana for recreation or whatever, there's a lot of students that are going to be lacking on just the basics. I have a friend who teaches up in Michigan, and she already uses part of her paycheck just to give basic school supplies to her kids that she teaches. We're looking at that here. It's only a matter of time, and I think banning it is the way to go. Now, it's not going to be easy, because 3 percent is 3 percent, although we don't know what that number would be for this area. And it makes it tougher, because one of the other towns around can vote it in, and then it's, but at least it doesn't come into what is known as unique Monticello. We have people that come here just to live because of our reputation on doing things right. We've got a hospital on the north side, we've got a library on the west, we have a beautiful church and another school on the east, and then also we have a new school system going in on the south side, along with the sheriff's department there, that's a new building. What we need is some sort of manufacturing or distribution center of some sort. And if I had money and wanted to build a business, and I looked around town and saw the dispensary for marijuana, I'd leave here in a heartbeat. And just out of curiosity today, I looked up in my Webster's crossword puzzle dictionary what dispensary, what words are synonymous with it? There was only one. It was clinic. Does anybody really believe that this marijuana is going to be, should be a clinic, should be another name? Why don't we call it dope shop and be done with it? I think that's it for me. I think a ban, and one person mentioned, well, because I sit and have coffee with the guys at 2:00, sometimes at Hardee's, and then also 5:00 on Fridays with people from the area. The five United Methodist allowed old Catholic to sit with them and have coffee with them. So, and some of those do work at the food pantry, and some of the stories they tell about people coming in wanting a handout or needing it, and the one that really makes sense for this right now in my argument is, I had a guy come in the other day, stoned, smelling of dope awning, marijuana, asking for food, rent, gas, and power bill. And he had the gall to come in, stoned, and ask for it? Well, he had money enough to buy the damn stuff. Why don't we just, it's going to happen more. And can we get, will it get to a point where the food pantry, Whittle Tree, mental health center, the hospital can't handle it all? Possible. And I'd like to share with you one other thing. Our family lost a great nephew to overdose of fentanyl just last month. His death should be meant to do something, to do something positive. He was just a young kid, and he thought that he could drink a barrel of beer and eat the wood. That's a Navy term. Anyway, he couldn't. And in the end, it cost him dearly, and he had a 10-month-old baby girl. So, please, everybody, kick it down away from this town. We're beautiful and unique, we ought to stay there. And I live out in the country, so somebody could say, "Well, you're not from Monticello itself." But I have lived here for 21 years now, so I should be able to say something about Monticello and area. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated September 10, 2019 through September 23, 2019. Meeting minutes. City council meeting minutes, September 9, 2019. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, August 19, 2019. Budget report, August 31, 2019. Treasurer's report, August 31, 2019. And fire report, August 2019. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions before we vote?
I had a couple of questions. Just out of curiosity, there was some improvements from the facade for bookstore. What kind of improvements did they make?
They applied for the facade with a grant through Main Street, and I think theirs was actually done about two or three months ago.
Okay.
They just turned everything in, which is why we're refunding.
Okay. And what improvements did they make?
A new awning.
Okay. And then the other question, and the pool bond, is there somebody going to explain?
More, what are you?
Because the last page looks like 672 percent of, it looks like to me, that's that last page there on the, that's okay.
Why we are at 672 percent? Is that the whole of there? That's the entire category. I'll check it out. You know, I don't know, just by place I get it.
That's okay. Took it back. That's fine.
Anyone else? Roll call, please, Jill.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is on the agenda is the mayor's report. New business. Welcome to the bespoke gift company opening at 107 West Main Street, formerly the Christian Clinic space on the south side of the square, this November in downtown Monticello. Upcoming events. Monticello High School homecoming parade steps off this Friday at noon from the high school. Monticello Theater Association's final weekend of the Witness for the Prosecution is this weekend at the Phoenix Theater. Enjoy songs along the signament at the Allerton Music Bar Festival this weekend. Join the University of Illinois School of Music during this candlelit weekend of crickets, cocktails, and rich music in Allerton's Music Bar. The city is partnering with Cub Scout Pack 122 for the annual food drive on Saturday, October 19, 2019. Council is encouraged to help promote and pick up donations. The Monticello Recreation Foundation is hosting a trivia night on Saturday, October 26 at 7:00 PM. I'd really like to have, the council have a team. You're all as smart as I am. I think you could maybe not look totally foolish, but if you would be interested, if you would be so kind?
What's the date on that, Mayor?
The 26th of October. And I think it's at the community building. Okay? So, please let me know, just send me an email or a text, all right? That's my report this evening. Let's move on to old business. It's the first time I've seen old business since I've been sitting in the chair here. Ordinance 2019-50, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Monticello, Illinois. This is basically housekeeping. Thank, am I correct? Every ordinance that we've passed, or maybe not every, up to this time, but ordinances that we've passed need to be codified. So, this sends the supplement to the people that do that kind of stuff, so they can put them in book force. So, it's stuff that we've already done, there's nothing new, and nothing exciting, nothing sneaky, nothing, nothing. So, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2019-50. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there comments, discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, that's much better. New business. Resolution 2019-52, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow an accessory structure, 1,000 Medical Center Drive, that's Kirby Medical Center. Callie, Jill.
Thank you, Mayor. Kirby Medical Center was to construct an additional accessory structure plus for storage, excuse me, at their property, which is owned and industrial commercial. The structure will be 30 by 50, cul-de-sac building with dark brown metal siding and roof, about 16 feet, six inches to the peak. The stored building would include an entrance door for overhead doors, betting, concrete floor, and a concrete apron that does not include plans for plumbing and heating, but needs electricity obviously for the overhead door and lighting. The building will be used for maintenance and item storage, and located east and north of the KMC ambulance building, which will not create any for additional parking for section 153020C2, remember that? The code states that a conditional use is required for additional accessory structures. So, they are requesting a conditional use permit to allow them to afford with their plans. A public notice was published in the August 28 edition of the local paper, and adjacent property owners are notified by the state statute. The planning and zoning board held a public hearing at 13:00 last Monday, where no public comment was provided, and the planning and zoning board made a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit request, 5 yes, 0 no, 2 absences.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2019-52.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we proceed? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2019-53, an ordinance rezoning a parcel of property from IC to RE1 and granting a conditional use permit to allow a planned unit development, PUD Sage Woods subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Kirby Medical Center owns 6.72 acre parcel, proposed parcel, excuse me, zone plan industrial commercial. I suggested here, sorry. They would like to construct a residential development called Sage Woods, which would be an active adult community. And while I give the overview, Neil Finlin and the tenant house are here.
They want to come up.
We'll give it to them once I'm done. So, we're going to handle this all in one action. The first order is to resell the property to something that's a little more compatible to residential use, that being single-family residential, similar to what was done with Sage Meadows. Second, part of the ordinance is to issue a conditional use permit to allow planned unit development. Now, some of you may not be aware of what that is, but it basically is an opportunity or a process to initiators for development where traditional zoning law requirements may not address that. So, it's beneficial to a developer, because they can actually accomplish things that maybe would otherwise require several different variances or setback requirements or things like that, but it also allows the city some extra, the ability to put a little extra control on it. We can require more open space, we can require certain other things that will necessarily, again, be handled with traditional zoning. So, the proposed development would have 19 single-family dwelling lots and over four acres of open space in a common area, and that allow for connectivity between the pedestrian and the bike path, as well as the existing amenities out there. In terms of the PUD, there also usually comes some deviations from the zoning code. So, the first of which is the lot width. In a RE1 zone, the lot width, minimum lot width is 75 feet, minimum lot area is 8,000 square feet. And then some of the lots that are proposed here have a lot width that actually, you can see in the corner, where it has a funnel shape, I think it puts down to about 30 feet width, but then opens up shortly thereafter. So, staff is comfortable with that deviation, in addition to the lot area deviation of less than 8,000 square feet. And then the final deviation, the setbacks in an RE1 zone are normally 30 feet in the front, and then 10 percent between 8 and 10 feet on the sides, and then 20 feet in the rear. They are requesting a reduction from the front yard setbacks from 30 feet to 20 feet, and then the side yard setbacks from 8 feet to 5 and 1/2 feet. Again, the planned unit development process allows for these deviations as shown and presented, should they meet the PUD requirements, which are also outlined in the zoning ordinance, as well as the ordinance that you're to consider tonight. So, a public notice was published again in the August 28 edition of the local paper, and adjacent property owners are notified by certified male Escher statute. The planning and zoning board held a public hearing last Monday, and no comment was made. After further discussion, the planning and zoning board voted to recommend approval of the rezoning and conditional use to allow the PUD above mentioned deviations, 5 yes, 0 no, 2 absences.
Thank you. You put the light back up there. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2019-53?
I do have a question.
We're going to, we'll do questions, we'll take questions as soon as we make or have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I can't help but notice there's one exit in and out of there, and that's already a fairly busy road, right?
It's just, it's just.
It's Medical Center Drive.
Yeah, it's Medical Center Drive, and we're putting more stuff in there. Is that, is it, would it be unwise to put something, a second exit out onto the main thru there?
There's, you don't have a whole lot of room, and you can't see it with the overlay, but in northwest corner of that, we are a bus station that handles all the cemetery from that area. So, it occupies most of the, most of the corner, and I think it'll be, it'll be pretty tight with the entrance on there. Not, I'd say it's a call.
I just, as a driver, as a school bus driver, I know we've got to go back in there for other people, for other people, and it just seems like that's, there's more going in that, than that place.
And you know that's a 55-plus community.
Are you talking about an extra road in the subdivision?
I didn't, I didn't understand it. That doesn't change the.
Okay, but I'm just saying, it is a, is basically.
I'm just saying, that whole area is, I mean, we're building all that up, and there's one way in it and one way out. That's my only question.
I think the future planes were to connect through Walden, correct? So, there will be, once Sage Meadows builds out, there will be that second access through Walden.
Provided they fill those blocks.
Yeah. Yeah, Sage Meadows is supposed to connect to Jennings City Road and Arrow.
Something like that, yeah.
You guys want to come up to the table to field questions?
Yeah, that's exactly, that's, that's going in at some point, but until then, look at all that area that is. Maybe it's nitty-gritty, I don't know.
No, that's fine. That's what, that's what you do.
Sure. Neil Finlin, I'm with Farnsworth Group. I'm a civil engineer, and I've been responsible for the project actually from the beginning. I should also mention, Steve was mentioned, of course, I think you know Floyd, but with us tonight too is Paul Phillips and Scott Lewis. They're the partners in the building operation of the project as well. And I promise I'll get to that question out, maybe just a couple of opening remarks if I can. We've been working on the project for over a year, well over a year, actually. Really, and as was mentioned, it's an active adult community. It does have city streets, city sidewalks, trails that wind through the property. And I just thought it was, you know, we can show this on the wall, and we've got the foam boards on the, on the other side, but it's just nice to have that in hand, so you get a good idea of really what we're getting into. We really believe this has been well planned out, and really to, to the staff, many thanks for kind of ringing this thing out. Again, we've been working on this for quite some time. It's a really quality development, and we have all the amenities of the city in the way of the sidewalks and streets and utilities and the maintenance, you know, that's necessary to make sure all that functions, but then again, all the privacy, you know, of a private development. So, really it's kind of the best of both worlds. The last thing I'll mention, there was a comment or a question, I should say, at the planning commission meeting of, is there room in the 50-foot rideaway for the street and the sidewalks? The answer is yes. There's about five feet separation between the back walk and the sidewalk and the sidewalk after that. So, so there is kind of a safe zone from the back of curb to the sidewalk to keep pedestrians, you know, out of that traffic flow. And finally, to your question, Mr. Burris, in regard to traffic or the congestion or those kind of things, what we had to do is we, we took a truck turning movement, movement through this cul-de-lune, I'll call it, and we had to make sure that we could bring a full highway semi, in other words, a moving truck, in and out of this, and we can. In fact, we submitted that to the engineering department, so that they could see, and we had to know that too, so that we weren't going to, you know, have a situation where you, you could maybe get in, but you couldn't get out, or you couldn't even get in with the moving trucks. So, you know, that's part of, you know, the movement around there. I mean, this is a, you know, a highway. I mean, this is a, you know, a highway over the road, Mayflower-type moving, moving truck to get in, unload, and get out of there. So, you know, with any other vehicles, we're confident that that could happen, but then, maybe your other question is in regard to, you know, the congestion, and it's, it's 19 homes, and what we talked about, really, at the planning commission is, you know, there's variances that Kelly had outlined, but I think the bottom line on it is, is this, the density of this is very light, because there is such much, so much green area in here, landscaping along this area. So the density on this is 2.8 homes per acre, and that's very, very low. For instance, Sage Meadows, it also has a fair amount of green area, is 3.5 homes per acre. So the overall density of this is pretty light, it's very light, actually. And the other thing is, there are only 19 units. Really, what could be concerned, considered a cul-de-sac, or a cul-de-lune, is kind of a popular name because of the, the green area in the middle. It's really just, it's just one large cul-de-sac. Now, the advantages that come with this green area in the middle is, it's easier to maneuver around, you know, this, I'll call it a circle, than it would be just a small cul-de-sac in the center. And, and the other thing that we talked about with regard to public works is, we have an area that snow could be stored in the center of this, you know, in the winter. The criticism, quite rightly of cul-de-sacs, is, you know, they're private, they function just fine, but, you know, come winter, the snow ends up, everybody's driving. In this situation, that's not, that's not the case, and it could be stored in the, in the center. So finally, regarding your question, it really is only 19 homes on, on that site, and, and we think that functions just fine in regard to traffic or congestion or any of those things. And really, if there is congestion, it would be not here, but, but here, you know, to get out. You know, it would, it would be, and we just don't see that with, you know, the residents that would occupy these homes. For the most part, there are only two-car garages. There's a couple that could maybe be three-car, but that's about it. And, you know, there's this flow of traffic from the senior development would be much less, I mean, you're not chasing kids, you know, to activities, and, you know, coming and going, that we all know goes with the kids. Hey, Kelly, would you do the first, the first slide? Overall. And then, what we mentioned also is, in the overall, what we finally do with the whole development, this is Sage Meadows back here, is this does tie in then, back in this area to Walden. So we have traffic, so not only for Walden's, you know, back area, but also this, this is also. So we've finally got a connection to get through there, school buses and everything else alike, emergency vehicles, too, for that matter.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm looking, because that's great that there's access in and out of the area, and I understand it is what it is, but as you go up, if you look at this, there's all these parking spots for the hospital, there's all that hospital traffic, then you go farther in, if I'm not mistaken, that's open up, there's houses back already, that's, that's all traffic for the whole area, is what I'm saying. It's not, I'm not as concerned about the one area as the overall area.
Oh, the overall?
You see what I'm saying?
Well...
And I understand at some point that will open up, but the reality is, until that opens up, it's potential for at least headache, nothing else.
Well, you know, the one thing in regard to Medical Center Drive, it's, it's wider than a state street. You know, so there, you know, there are kind of some bypass areas that, you know, that can accommodate that turning movements, you know, like getting into, you know, the area that's under construction right now, the medical office building. We, we got room in Medical Center Drive that, you know, we're not startling that thing up because it's tight, you can get around if there's movement stimulus. It's a good question, but we just don't see a traffic problem.
And Rodney, just to kind of piggyback on what Neil's saying, I'm sure if anybody can talk to you is probably Steve, because he's there every day, but I also do a lot of work back in Sage Meadows with those homes. There's 12 now, four that are unoccupied, but I'm also a part of the, the crossfire that Kirby has, and I bet out of the six to eight times a week that I'm driving down Kirby Medical Center, or Medical Center Drive, might pass a car, you know, maybe coming and going, so. And, I mean, being that the width is pretty good, but, I mean, I just don't, I don't, I don't ever have any congestion on them. A half dozen, 10 times I'm there a week, so.
I can add to, to, actually, when we did the original planning and design for the 108 acres and decided where to put the hospital, it was more expensive to put it where we did, because we obviously had to put in more road to get to it, but that was done intentionally to allow for more runoff coming out of the parking lot, or going back out to Route 47. You know, we, we could have put the hospital where the retention bond and where Sage Woods is planned, but obviously would have caused some light congestion right there and run off of Route 47. So what we have found is, yeah, traffic has increased, obviously, if things have grown, but we haven't seen, haven't had any issues at all.
Okay. All right. Is that answer your question?
Sure.
Anyone else have a comment or question?
I do, actually.
Yeah, Tammy?
My concern is more with the setbacks, because the setbacks, now, you're, especially on the side, you're going from eight feet to five and a half feet. Is there not a concern for, like, fire hazard, hazard? One house starts, I mean, that's awful close.
10 feet is the, is the separation by building code before you have to have a fireproof, so that's why we're at the 11-foot, at the 11-foot mark. So fire code calls for that 11-foot, meaning the five and a half, and that's minimal. We don't know that that'll necessarily always be the case, but, but, yeah, we, sure, you bet we have that concern, but that's why we conform to fire code.
And I take it the setbacks, then, even on the front and so forth, is just, this just to allow more green space, then? I mean, put the homes closer to the front, and then you've got green space around?
Yeah, and that's what I say, the, the real key is that 2.8 homes per acre. You know, they're not, they're not jammed in there like you might think. You know, they're, they're clustered in metal, and people want, especially at this, you guys, you kind of shore me up on this, but I can testify, that people just don't want as much green space to take care of if it's in a common area, you know, so it's more enjoyable than if everybody's got it alone. I think they're walking away from a lot of these loans, large loans.
And are they sharing drives, some of them? Okay.
That's basically two, I was soon to break up the look, from the difference in the...
And the last slide that Kelly's got on, the wall, it's back to the consequences, you know, that the intent would be to have this, and the other, and the trails, you know, to have connected to the system starting place. Like I say, it's been a, it's been a long process to get where we're at.
Answer your questions, Tammy.
Yep.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
So does a walking trail go through?
That's so like...
I can't remember.
Yes, that's what goes right through there.
Yes.
Yeah, it comes through.
Good job. Okay.
And then it, on the perimeter, too.
Yes.
Anyone else? Good questions and good concerns. We have a motion, right?
We do.
Any other questions, comments? Let's have a roll call, please. This is to an ordinance rezoning a parcel of property from IC to RE1, and granting a conditional use permit to allow a planned unit development, Sage Woods subdivision. Please.
Mr. Burris?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2019-54, a resolution approving a preliminary plan, Sage Woods subdivision. I think I go to you.
So this is, this is a preliminary plan for what you guys just saw from, from the Sage Meadows subdivision. As was said before, Kirby Medical Center is one proposing this, single-family residential planned unit development. Farnsworth and Kirby have submitted what's considered a preliminary plan, the city staff will review. It meets the requirements of Chapter 152, 041 of the municipal code. They are requesting waivers for minimum rideaway width, which Neil discussed earlier, typical walk, rideaway width, the 60-foot, requesting reduction to 50-foot. And they're also requesting a waiver to go from B618 style curb and gutter to M618 style curb and gutter, and, and on part of it to construct a sidewalk on the, on one side of the street instead of the other side of the street. Other than those, the health must be compliance with all their, all of the requirements that's outlined in our manual practice of design for public improvements. For this, the required public notice was published in the August 28 edition of the Lake County Journal. I did not receive any comments from the public. The planning and zoning board met at their meeting last Monday, had held a required public hearing. No comments were brought from the public. They did have, just have a couple of questions about the rideaway reduction, and then the, they voted to, they approved a motion to clarify VS002 absent, and enclosed a preliminary plan behind that resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-54? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
What, what is the first between the B618 and... I think I was just going to ask. One of them is a barrier curb, the B618 is a barrier curb. The M618 is a malleable curb. So basically, the difference is, if you go out to Apple Tree subdivision, and you look at all of their driveways, they've all been saw cut, and you end up with quite a lip in that, that curb that you have to, you have to mount. And every time you build a house, you have to have somebody come out and, and cut this curb down. The, the M618 curb is a malleable, it won't require any of that, they'll put all of the curb and stuff in, and then they'll build a house, it's a pretty solid way to subdivide it, and it'll do no just impact whatsoever.
Is that what I have in my subdivision?
Uh, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have cutouts, I know, it's big.
Well, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2019-55, an ordinance approving the final plan of Sage Woods subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this being the end. This is the final plan for the Sage Woods subdivision that we've all been talking about tonight. Farnsworth and Kirby Medical Center, they've submitted this to us as well. Subdivision is, you can see, it's located on the north side of Medical Center Drive, just west of Kirby Medical Center. It's a single-family residential subdivision. It meets the definition of a permanent subdivision, Chapter 152 of the municipal code for final class mission review and approval. The subdivision requires a preliminary plan, which you just voted on, and all the public notice and stuff, like I told you last time. Planning and zoning board met, and they voted that preliminary plan, yes, 002 absent, and you just voted to read it as well. This subdivision, final plan, it does require city council approval by way of ordinance subdivision.
I think I made a tactical error. I should have asked for a waiver before I took the ordinance, a second reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? We'll have to do it again.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now I call for an ord, uh, a motion to approve ordinance 2019-55.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we've had any more discussion? I'm sorry, I did that out of order, it just slipped my mind for, I don't know why. Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thanks. Moving on to Ordinance 2019-56, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis business establishments and infusers. Cal, Joe?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Here. As the council is familiar, there's a new state law allowing adult use of cannabis in the state of Illinois. That new industry in state is supported by not only dispensaries, which has the most attention, but also cultivation centers, craft growers, processors, users, and transporters. These are, these cannabis businesses will be in addition to those allow, oh, those medical dispensaries and cultivation centers. Council discussed many times, whether to prohibit these businesses or to permit, regulate these businesses, which is generally expressed desires to see more input, input in the public input for their study, as the council staff was directed to prepare a moratorium, and the moratorium is sent to the planning and zoning board. What is a moratorium? It's a temporary ban to allow further study on draft regulations, the city to develop appropriate regulations for applications pending forms, property owners, and current city regulations affecting cannabis businesses may change. A proposed draft, it would last for 12 months, or until the ordinances governing cannabis are adopted, which are cannabis perks. The, as I mentioned, the EZB had a public hearing last week, as a moratorium, is a kind of a tax amendment, the Farm and Club here, EZB recommended approval after a hearing that sounded like a good one. The ordinance before the night is generally the same, only higher changes to make sure that medical cannabis uses are included in the definition of cannabis business establishments, and also, the ordinance before the night also makes the moratorium extendable, although I think that the general sense of hope is that substantive ordinance would be considered before the moratorium expires. Ordinance before the night, it's on first reading. Waive second reading vote, set this for second reading, happy to answer any questions you have to answer.
Okay. Is there a motion to waive second reading of ordinance 2019-56?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2019-56?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? We've talked about this before, so it's not, it's not your business.
Quiet, order.
Excuse me, no.
If, if I...
No. Can I, no comments or criticism, or crit, criticism, no comments or questions?
I sort of reiterate the fact that our intention is to not take the 12 months, but the 12 months gives us the time, should, if things, if a trailer built potentially coming up, and this will give us the time to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Thank you. Item F on the agenda this evening is discussion-only recreational cannabis. Does anyone have comments to make this evening? From the council? We've done it a lot of times, I know.
Yeah, go ahead. It was recommended by one of the audience members at the PDB meeting tonight. Tried to figure out other ways to get public opinion, because obviously, we've had eight or ten people that have come up, and maybe not that many at the public hearing. And I kind of get an idea of talking to people, kind of where this is leaning, but I don't feel like we have gotten enough public. So, you know, one of the suggestions was to include some sort of survey in the water bill, or find other ways, so that, you know, there's a lot of people that are not comfortable coming to council and speaking, so is there a way to get more public opinion? Because I think that's what's missing. I think we've got a lot of the information we need, but we don't have, I don't, I don't feel like we have enough public opinion.
Okay, and I think we may have mentioned or discussed this amongst ourselves, and that's probably a good idea, to ask, ask for input that way. And I, I would hope that we would do that. No? Why not?
Our phones will ring off the hook if we put it on the water bill. Off the hook, Lacy does not have that I mean.
Well, we'll talk about this, we'll talk about this.
Well, whether it's that or some other way, I think we will find some other way to get...
Online.
Yeah, survey.
Just, and early, I've seen community use, online surveys, or some that, you know, at, uh, like, center public meetings around town, there's many different approaches that I don't usually, right, it's made to do it.
Right, I agree.
But, yeah, something to do with it.
I'm wondering if we're ever gonna get any more at all, because we saw what we got with the garbage discussion, that was crazy, but I don't think people, I think she was absolutely right, that people are apathetic and fast and...
Well, I don't, I really, I mean, I agree with Mike to a certain degree, because I do think that people, a lot of people are, don't want to take the time to come and talk. And there should, maybe, maybe there should be another way for them to make their, make it known. I have had not one phone call the whole time we've been discussing this. Has anyone had a phone call about it?
I got, I got an email.
I've had a number, go ahead, Jerry.
I've had a phone call and an email.
Okay.
I had three emails to my city email, two contacts to my personal website on Facebook, to me personally. I was on this, I was in the grocery store Saturday morning, stopped by two people going through the grocery store. I was on the square Saturday night, stopped by three people Saturday night on the square at the Monticello celebration. I've had some exposure. All the comments have been, I've also had some people come into the courthouse and speak to me personally while I was working, and still, I have not had, I've not had a yes at any of them. So, but I've had, it stirred up personally for me, way more contacts than I had with the garbage thing, you know?
Right.
And I thought I had plenty there. This has, you know, people have come, come to the forefront. I was surprised, my, my wife, Saturday, said, "I can't take you anywhere." "Can't get anything done, these people ask me." I said, "Well, it's what it is."
Well, I've had, I've had people...
There were some individuals, you know...
I've had people make comments to me, and the IQ, most of it has been negative, but it's always at the grocery store, at the Monticello celebration. I even had two in Champaign when I was at Sam's Club, and admire, people, you know, from here, that have said something.
They recognize...
I'm not saying they're, I'm not saying they're, no.
Yeah, it's out there.
But I think those that are really interested in saying anything have said something by now, but, anyway, I think you're right, Mike, we'll, we'll come up with something one more time. Okay? Anything else, discussion-wise? Okay, let's move on, aldermen's reports. Let's start with Jerry.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor, nothing. Let's skip to Rodney tonight.
Poor Wendell. It was just, the twelfth, we had the art installation of Great Day.
I haven't, you know, I haven't been by there yet. I keep forgetting it's there and it's been done. I need to get by there.
Looking forward to...
I've got a rotary tomorrow else.
Looking forward to doing more of those in the area.
Cool. I think it's great. Let's move on to Tom.
Really, I just thought I'd free Mr. your attention, how about this past weekend in Reba Field? It's really not Monticello, but...
That's harsh. That is harsh. Steve, I want that put in the paper.
Help out those cardinals, huh?
Yeah, right. Thank you so much. Tammy?
Um, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
John?
The homecoming games this Friday?
Yep.
Who they play?
DCC.
DCC.
Captain. Gotcha, okay, hoping to be there. Had a good visit with the, at the Monticello celebration. There was a little, little, a little bit of ranting between twelve and one, but we really, really enjoyed heading up there. I think I should be able to participate in the trivia night, October twenty-sixth, I have, I have an event that morning. I might be a little exhausted, but if I can get a nap in, I think I can get my brain rested enough, though.
John, how old are you?
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be at the Roeth, Roethon, Roethon at CrossFit.
John, how old are you?
I'll be thirty-five next month.
You don't need a nap.
I know. Mayor, I know I don't even look thirty-five, but I'm, I'm getting there, but it's okay. So, but I would probably be in, if it's in the evening, I think you can put me down.
I have nothing.
I think it must be you, Mike.
I just reiterate that along with you and Kelly and Terry, we attended the Illinois Municipal League...
Right.
...annual conference, and I thought, as a new city council member, it was very valuable. Obviously, to nobody's surprise, the most popular sessions were on the cannabis legislation that was standing, were only in those sessions, but there were some other good sessions that I attended. The last one was on budgeting, which we have covered up, so that was, was a lot of valuable things that ended up going into that exercise.
Thank you. It was, it was enjoyable getting away. You know, Mike was a first-timer, so, they, they always are. I went to the, I went to the first cannabis thing, and of course, it was for lawyers, so you can imagine how, how interesting and dry it was. Wendell!
Dry.
Dry.
Damn.
Couple, three things, a couple of things quick, please, all remember, Friday night, the homecoming, the parade steps off at noon, be out there, be in the crowd. I think the way it looks, so, you better bring your raincoat to the game, because I'm not sure it's not gonna get soaked and wet. At the celebration, impressed with what went on, a little disappointed in a couple things that we'll look at next year. My biggest disappointment, I'll have to say, was that when I drove around the square Sunday morning, I was not impressed with the cleanup situation. I think we need to add a provision next year to the license, or to the permission that we give the liquor establishments, or anybody that's concerned with alcohol, that they need to clean up their area when they're done, because the square was not in good shape Sunday morning. And I know there were a couple of city employees that busted their can Saturday night, I watched